Bledge allegiance.
Mr. Reader.
Please let the record show that all three commissioners are here and present along with our attorney Drew. And of course, the Otter's office is here as well. I do have one addition to the new business and that's CCMG, so I'd like to put that under K. Does anyone else have any other new business? Alright, make a motion to approve the minutes with the addition.
A second.
Motion made in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it three zero. Uh, did you guys have a chance to review the minutes from the prior meeting?
Yeah, I'm good with them. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, none heard, motion carries two, uh, three zero. Uh, we don't have any appointments at this point in time, other than under the space committee needs. Uh, and we'll get to that in just a second, but first we have Joseph Gates from the Salvation Army for a little bit of update for us. How are you today, sir?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Wonderful, thank you.
There we go. Had to make sure that turned green.
Perfect.
So I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to come here tonight to just give you an update, because I've been here a little over a year now. Um, and so I just want to let you know what it's been like for us this last year, um, and what it's meant to the families that we serve. So from October twenty-fourth of last year to August of this year, we've helped two thousand six hundred and forty-six families. So that is roughly about six thousand two hundred and forty people right here in Knox County. Um, I know those numbers sound big to some people, but to every single one, it's personal. Um, each number is a neighbor, every number is a story. And one of the biggest ways we service through our food pantry where every week we're seeing sixty to ninety families coming through our door, looking for help. For many of them, that box of groceries is the difference between a full cupboard or just even a meal on the table. See, I think of a mom that came in recently who had just lost her job and didn't know how she was going to feed her two kids. See, we were able to give her groceries and connect her with resources and remind her she wasn't alone, because that's what most people need. She left with tears in her eyes, not just because of the food, but because she felt hope again. See, that's what we want every family to feel is hope, and we're grateful that we don't do this alone. We've worked with people like the United Way and Saint Vincent de Paul, the city treasurer, and even Helping His Hands. Working together, we make sure that families get help without falling through the cracks. See, last Christmas, and then you guys know why we'll be talking about Christmas here in a second. One family stands out where both parents were working, but money was so tight, and that's a story we get every day. They're worried their kids would wake up with nothing under the tree, and through our Christmas Assistance Program, we were able to provide toys and food boxes so that they could celebrate together. The mom told us that when she saw her children's face light up that morning, it was the first time she had felt peace in weeks. See, I also want to make something very clear that every dollar that we raise in anything that we do stays right here in Knox County. It does not go anywhere. Eighty-two cents on the dollar stays right here, um, goes right back into our programs. That other eighteen cents is our overhead like everything else. See, local dollars meet local needs. It helps keep our pantry stocked and keep the lights on in people's houses and helping families in crisis right here at home. Now, you know I love Christmas, because it's one of our biggest, uh, things of the year, and our Red Kettle Campaign is coming up. I know it's ninety degrees outside, but soon we will have snow here, I have a feeling, very shortly. And it's not just a holiday symbol, it's what keeps the mission going year-round, and one of the highlights every single year is the city versus county showdown. And that's going to happen at Walmart again this year. It's become a Knox County tradition, city leaders on one side and county leaders on the other. Competing for bragging rights, which I know, if I talk to city, they're going to say you guys cheat every year, but I don't think that's true. Um, but this year, the showdown will be December twelfth from eleven to seven, and I know the mayor has already cleared his schedule to make sure he is out there, um, with this. And so commissioners, we would love to see you out there representing the county. It's always fun, it draws a big crowd, and it makes a real difference, because that's what it's all about. So I want to thank you commissioners, thank you for your leadership and the way you care for this community. The Salvation Army is honored to serve alongside you on the front lines. I'd close with this, behind every number is a face, a name, and a story. A child who goes to bed with a full stomach, a family that gets to celebrate Christmas with joy instead of worry, a mom who can keep a roof over her kid's head. That's why we do what we do. And I want to personally invite you, if you've never joined us at a kettle, come out this season. Every, even an hour of ringing the bell makes a difference, and when our community sees leaders like you standing out there, it sends a powerful message. Knox County takes care of their own. So thank you again for letting me share just this little story tonight, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have. I do have handouts as well to go over, so you guys didn't have to write down the date. I do have that, and I also have our, um, annual report for last year as well, so you guys can see those numbers. Is there any questions that you have for me?
Say December twelfth, eleven, seven?
December twelfth, eleven to seven, city versus county showdown. It's all over Facebook already, so...
Did we reach out to you and get hold of you?
You give it out to me, or you guys can create your own little sign up? It's already blocked off, so literally you guys make up, if you guys want to do an hour, you guys... I don't know how you guys normally do it?
Um, I know how I normally scheduled it, but that is, um...
Mr. Reader, you've done this in the past several, several times. Would you like to take the lead on this?
Um, in what regard? Of scheduling?
Yeah, being the, uh, county chairperson, if you will.
Will do. So, um, yeah.
I can make sure I'm off that day.
I'm gonna say, if you just want to create a list on your own and...
Oh, no, I know how to do it. We, we've won more for a reason. Just saying.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for having me here tonight and giving you guys an update on what the Salvation Army is doing.
Yeah, no, the investment is real. Um, I was very glad to be able to come celebrate at your headquarters many times, and I appreciate your zeal. Um, I understand the impact of the Salvation Army, and we, um, our county employees for many years have been... We've actually had so many sign up, we've, we've had to double up at times, so, um, I look forward to, again, beating the city.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you guys so much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Joe.
City councilman in the back.
He knows, he knows the truth. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Drew, disposition of six oh one East Lawton Street, Bicknell, Indiana.
Uh, this is a continuing agenda item. Uh, we officially have all the bids in the second round that went through, the highest bid is six thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, Jason and Jamie Darwin, uh, they were joint owners. In their letter, they did say that they want to maintain the lots.
Drew, would you turn your mic on?
And then plan on building housing in the near future on those two lots.
And the name again was?
Jason and Jamie Darwin. So, they would be the highest, it's either reject all or approve the highest, and then we would have to enter into a purchase agreement. I would say for some reason they can't close on it, the second highest is Brandon and Michaela Chinchar, Chinchar? They were at three thousand and one dollars.
For the record, will you state the third bidder's amount?
Oh, third bidder would have been the city of Bicknell.
So I don't, we, I don't have my package here, Chinchar's.
Oh, that was the one we waited on, the auditor gave it to us today, sorry. They would be, they had an original bid of...
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, yeah.
And that was, um, file stamped?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and the mail was in the appropriate timeframe? Okay, just want to make sure, because when we have competing bidders, we need to make, verify. Um, and there's no, um, refresh me on the code. Is there a period of time?
To close on it?
No, well, to close as well as a period of time for...
The bidding?
Improvement.
Oh, they, they don't, they're not required to, they just buy and own it.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve the most highest and responsive bidder, which would be Jason and Jamie Darwin for six oh one East Lawton Street.
A second.
In Bicknell.
Okay, well, there's a first and a second on the table. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, Knox County Space Needs Committee, resolution, what resolution did you give this group?
It's gonna be seven.
Seven. Could you please read that for us?
It's the resolution of the county commissioners establishing a space needs committee, whereas the county commissioners, executive and legislative of the county, are responsible for maintaining, disposing, and establishing adequate space for governmental functions within Knox County. Whereas Knox County has engaged several architectural firms over the years to perform space need studies. Each study has found that Knox County lacks adequate space to perform necessary government functions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county commissioners of Knox County, Indiana, that a space needs committee is established to assist in the preliminary discussions and recommendations concerning Knox County space needs. The space needs committee shall consist of three members, one member to be appointed by the county commissioners, which shall be a commissioner, and two members to be appointed by the county council, which shall be members of the Knox County Council. Each member shall be appointed for a term of two years. All vacancies in the membership shall be filled for the unexpired term in the same manner as initial appointments. Members of the board shall not receive any compensation. Members of the board only have recommendation powers. All matters must be presented to the respective governmental entity with decision-making powers.
Okay, this was at my request. Um, couple questions. I know we talked about this, Commissioner Ellerman and I at the last meeting, because my recommendation, we don't reinvent the wheel. This wheel's been created at least twice. So, first, first, did, did, did we discuss at the last meeting, I haven't reviewed, I did review the minutes, but I haven't reviewed the recording. Why would, why would we put two council? There's, I mean, was that their request, or, I mean, generally it's three, right?
It was two at the last meeting.
That doesn't constitute a quorum, okay, that must have been an oversight. Um, if they want three, I don't see why they couldn't appoint three, correct?
We talked about it at the budget hearing, it seemed final too.
Okay, okay. Um, the other comment I have is, under number one, um, I don't call these preliminary discussions. I mean, that's, that's a pretty big word there. Um, but other than that, I was just curious about that two-member, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't remember how that came about.
So, um, personally, I would much rather go down this road than there was a suggestion made that we have a caucus, um, which I, I don't believe that's within the spirit of open door.
But then let's have a public meeting.
Uh, or a public meeting.
Because all seven councilmen...
Correct.
Won an answer.
Um, well, it's in our court right now, and I appreciate that. My recommendation at this point in time would be to appoint Tim Ellerman to our space committee need, um, as our, as our representative to this. Tim, there's also members in here of, um... Other department heads, perhaps at your next meeting, you can think about who you would like perhaps to have on there as well, some department heads. I may bring those back to the board, back to this committee, uh, back to this board at our next meeting.
Where does it say that?
Um, I was thinking it was the nearors.
We, they were just going to be in there for advisory.
Advisory, yeah.
Come and talk, yeah, they're the technical members.
So, I make a motion to appoint Tim Ellerman to serve as our representative to this board.
A second.
There's a first and a second.
Out of respect for Commissioner Ellerman, um, I, I appreciate your volunteering, but I, I literally have heard you say you wish this project go away.
Well, I was pretty successful in negotiating the insurance resolution, getting the employees low on...
Well, I don't, again, out of respect to you, I appreciate that, but this is a matter that you want to go away, so I just want to be clear that...
I want to save the county money. I don't want to, we're already in debt to our balls with the county jail and the work release out there. I just want to be smart about spending our money, because like I said, I paid twenty grand this year in property taxes, and that, I mean, that puts a strain on my pleasure at home and how much I'll have to work to meet those demands.
I struggle personally to pay my own, so I understand, but we have, um, again, per the council, we have done an incredible job at saving to move forward with this for years. So, I just ask that you have an open mind, because I will be outvoted, um, because this is a plan we have unanimously agreed upon for many years.
Okay, motion on the table, uh, seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two, one. Um, precinct boundaries, Drew.
This is just an amended order to, um, change the precinct boundaries, uh, when the Indian Election Division reviewed it. Um, we had the clerk preparing the letters, uh, to go out in all the forms consistent, and it should be the Knox County Election Board. It's the only change.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the order establishing precinct boundary changes.
Second.
Second. Drew, uh, let's see. Sorry, yes. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, none, hearing motion carries three zero. Purdue Estate Opiate Settlement Approval, Drew.
Um, it's been on the media for quite some time. There's several opioid litigation that's going on. The Attorney General, uh, heads that up for the states, and when they're successful on negotiating these, the money funnels back down in part to the counties. Um, this is our participation agreement, uh, participate in the next round against Purdue Pharma. Uh, we're already receiving some others. Due to the timing requirements, I already signed up for it, um, so I'm seeking approval for it. Um, there's no cost to us on any of it.
Okay, make a motion to approve the Purdue State Opiate Settlement Approval.
A second.
There's a first and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll say we don't know the exact amount we get yet, because it's depending on how many counties participate, so...
Okay, moving on, Lam CDBG Grant Project through SIDC, um, once again, Drew. These are pass-through dollars?
These are pass-through, it was on the agenda last time, just to get the final, um, contractors paid on the project, it is complete and...
I make a motion to approve the grant document from the CDVG grant.
Okay, I'll second that. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, none heard, motion carries three zero. Kelly, Knox County Highway Superintendent Salary.
Uh, yes, this was a matter brought before the council that was not officially approved for an additional appropriation. Um, after a view of all the council budget hearings, um, our superintendent went to go ask for a raise of his own salary without approving it. I thought it was in very poor taste, and I asked that all additional requests that go before the council come here first.
Well, there was no additional appropriation.
Yes, there was. Was there an additional appropriation that went before the council? The salary of the highway superintendent? Okay, he got a raise, and we didn't approve it officially in this meeting.
Okay. Twenty twenty-six Holiday Calendar. Uh, I've submitted to you guys the other, last night, and then also Julie submitted one to you as well today. Uh, there are, I believe, sixteen, there are seventeen on here, because there's a January twenty twenty-seven, January one twenty twenty-seven on the one that Julie handed out. Um, I'll read those off, January one is a Thursday, Mar- uh, New Year's Day. January nineteenth is a Monday, Martin Luther King Day. February sixteenth is a Monday, President's Day. April third is a Friday, Good Friday. May fifth is a Tuesday, Primary Election Day. May twenty-fifth, Monday, Memorial Day. June nineteenth, Friday, is Juneteenth, National Independence Day. July third is a Friday, Independence Day. September seventh is a Monday, Labor Day. October twelfth is a Monday, Columbus Day. Uh, November third is a Tuesday, Election Day. The November eleventh is a Wednesday, it's Veterans Day. November twenty-sixth is a Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. November twenty-seventh is a Friday, Thanksgiving Day. December twenty-fourth is a Thursday, Christmas Eve. December twenty-fifth is a Friday, Christmas Day, and January one is a Friday, New Year's Day.
I haven't received this from anyone but you. Um, I, I don't know if Amanda or the Otter's offices have reviewed it. Okay, still I haven't reviewed it, yeah.
Alright, we can table it.
Yeah, we should.
Alright, I'll make a motion to table it. Do I have a second?
It's just tabled. I mean, we need to make a motion for that.
Claims.
I make a motion to approve claims.
Second that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, three zero. Payroll, make a motion to pay payroll.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Okay, CCMG. Chad? Come on up, if you would please. Talk to us a little bit about CCMG and what you would like for us to do tonight.
Well, I tell you what, I've been working on this road, and I've got district ones, I've got district twos. Uh, I got with Frank and talked to Kelly, they're gonna work on district threes. Um, Matt is helping me with this, this is my first one, and, uh, to, to get the, everything in. But I would like to have a list now, and also I've got, with District One, I've got Ramsey Road.
Let's not name them just in case we don't get it.
Okay, okay, I've got, I've got, sorry.
Just in case we don't get those roads paid.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, I, and I didn't want to bring this up either, but I, and District Three, or District Two, I have two pretty busy roads that... I, I talked to Shane McGregor, and that was kind of our plan. I, I want some input, I talked to Tim. You know, guys, I'm, I'm new here, I want to do what we can. Uh, I would love to get the, the million bucks from the state.
We all would love to get that million dollars from the state.
I know, but, but we gotta think, what if we don't, you know, and, and that's where I want to talk to you guys each, really each district of what you, you know, what you would like. And say we get it, I mean, I'm playing it big, I want to go do as much paving as we can. And, I, I mean, I'm a paving guy, um, but people like to see that new blacktop out there, you know, and, but I know we can't do everything. But I've been working on it pretty hard, just measuring the roads, I'm, I'm, I did that for a long time. Uh, but no, I'm just looking for you guys as guidance, and, and same way with Matt's. You know, he's gonna help me submit all the paperwork, but I'd like to have it in as quick as possible, so we can go through that, so...
In the conversation I had with him last night, uh, he would like for us to go ahead and pass a, um, not-to-exceed amount. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, well, and I talked to Matt today, what he's worried, if we don't get it, what we can do. And, and I'm really, I apologize, I'm not, I've only been here a month, and I'm not...
And you're doing a great job, by the way.
Oh, well, I'm trying, but I'm, I'm, you know, all I'm doing is, is closing up Matt's jobs that he started, so, yeah, yeah. We did gravel stabilization, stabilization today. Went very well, so Ramsey Orchard Road, we, uh, it went, now tomorrow we're doing Gray Barn and Harrison, and then Thursday we'll do Ellis Hill. So, that, that's a new thing, we're trying, and, and they brought representatives, they're, they're from Las Vegas. They brought representatives even today, and, you know, we was out there, they, they, we put eight thousand, eighty-five hundred... Uh, let's see, it's eighty-five hundred gallons of water on that with this product, and, but we had both graders going, and it, it went really well, from what they, they told me, and then what I seen. So, you know, we're, 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 we're plugging along, so, but yeah.
So for, for timing for Community Crossings matching grant, we need a, a commitment letter of up to six hundred thousand...
Yes.
Which would be the maximum amount for the grant.
Mm-hmm.
And we need, we have that budgeted, so we need to make that motion, which I do.
And I have a paper that, that we can sign, I, I haven't filled it out, because...
Sure.
But I, yeah, so I, I, I agree with that.
Yep.
Yeah. I thi- I think we need to do that, and at least get the ball rolling, and see what we can do, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, it is a, a match, but it also is an eighty-twenty match this year, which is changed.
Yes, it is eighty-twenty, yeah, and it's just, it's not the one point five, it's just the million, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Reader, you've made a motion on the floor for not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I will second that motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, none, hearing on the negatives, motion carries three zero. Have no old business to attend to today?
Yeah, I asked at the last meeting, you had mentioned in one of your emails that you signed the High Tech Crime Unit Agreement, is that, we need that?
That's the continuation of the, um, grant that the...
Please circulate that, I want to, please circulate that.
Okay, sure will. Um, Knox County Code Compliance, I have nothing from him at this point in time, Ready two point oh, I did have a conversation today, uh, with Chris Paul. They are fresh back from Japan. Had some great meetings, uh, to, uh, meet in meetings with some of the different Japanese companies that are here local. Uh, I know he is going to try to make it into our next meeting to discuss those a little bit more. Uh, E M O C, uh, E, oh, I'm sorry, uh, E M O C, uh, we've talked about that a little bit, Judicial Center, I have nothing on that.
So where are we at with KCRC and their utilities?
Uh, I made a phone call to, uh, them, I have not heard back, but I'll, I'll follow up with them again this week. Get that on...
And again, the, um, conversations I've had after budget hearings are, um, we're, please, please let's not kick this can down the road for our capital projects. We, we do need a joint meeting, um, it, we need a joint meeting. It would be nice to talk about it jointly, especially with the, the questions, the funds there, the plans that were already all approved, um...
Public comment under Resolution twenty twenty dash two.
I would like to say a couple things. I'd like to, uh, thank everybody that participated in the committee for the insurance. Um, even though we was unsuccessful in getting the premiums down for families and so forth, I'd like, we'll, we will continue to work on that and see what we can get accomplished in the future. Um, I know we spent a lot of time, and thought it'd work out good, but evidently we don't have the funds for it. Um, but I'd like to thank everybody that participated in that. Um, I'd also like to say that I am against funding the Pantheon, but that's just my opinion. Um, and last but not least, I am against passing the wheel tax, so, just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just looking here at things in front of me, did we pass resolution for the Space Needs Committee, or did we just vote to make an appointment?
You voted two, one on it.
For the committee or the appointment, or both?
Both.
Both.
Okay, got it, um, got it. That's, that's the only other questions I had, and I know I brought up, to follow up what you commented on, I brought up at budget hearings about the wheel tax specifically, so... Um, I've been asked by VU to come on an interview tomorrow to talk about the absolute, or the, the facts of... to come on an interview tomorrow to talk about the absolute, or the, the facts of the matter about a wheel and an excise or tax in House Bill fourteen sixty-one, so I have a lot of that information, and we'll be sharing that in some format at VU tomorrow, I don't know, um...
Will that be broadcast on something, or...
I got an invite from Dave at Vincent's University. There's a new show that they have called Behind the Headlines. The first one was with Dirk Carnahan about, I think, the recent murder of the young lady, and the next one they wanted to talk about, they've invited me, and they've invited Mike Morris, and he said that the reason they invited me was my, um, being a part of representing counties in opposition of this being a requirement under House Bill fourteen sixty-one, and then Mike Morris about the council's plans moving forward, so, um, I'll let you know. I don't know. I just know it's recorded, and I don't know when it'll be, um, but I will say again, and Lacy here to my right did call me after, I mentioned this at a meeting some weeks ago, um, but again, I want to point out, as I pointed out at council, we invest in income tax, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And the state of Indiana has consistently said, if you want to continue to get the funds you get, you need to have local skin in the game, which is a gross statement to me, because locally we use income tax. Other counties use money they receive from the riverboat. Some counties pass a wheel tax on their own, but we all uniquely supplement our roads the way we choose. So the issue being, if we pass this tax that we are now supposed to tax under House Bill fourteen sixty-one, for us to continue to receive fuel tax money, which will now be a direct distribution. We can still apply for community crossings, it's competitive, but they're saying if we don't pass this tax, we won't get a direct distribution for our lane miles. And I, I have a, I'll show you the thing here, but it's, we all have to pass the, cities do too. And by the way, if we pass the excise, or the low hut, the city has to pass it too, and everyone in Vincent's has to pay the county and the city. So again, it's very frustrating that the state of Indiana tells us we have to get a tax if we want a distribution of the fuel tax, so...
If we, if it did get passed by the council, um, would we be able to take that seven hundred and fifty thousand out of our budget?
Absolutely, yeah, and that was my recommendation, if we're gonna, if we're gonna place a tax on license plates and excises on cars, vehicles, we shouldn't be using income tax. That's, I mean, as a commissioner, I shouldn't be saying that, because we want all the money we can to put to our roads and bridges, but we've already decided to use income tax for that. It's very frustrating, very frustrating, but it is what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash two, is there any public comment to come before this board today? None, hearing our next meeting is October seventh, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. Unless there is anything further, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
That's table, that's there, I think everything is there.